Welcome to tonight's meeting of the National Board of Education's Human Resources Committee at the Nashville High School North Boardroom. It is 5:39 and today is September 30, 2024. And I'm calling this meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call for attendance.
Okay, Ms. Giglio?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is here. Ms. Darling is not here. We also have Ms. Daniels-Williams. Hold on. Ms. Lampier. Ms. Bishop. No, I'm not even looking. Dr. Andre and Mr. Bowes.
Okay, let us look at tonight's. First of all, let's start with Mr. Bowes's HR update, if we could. Do you mind? Are you capable?
Absolutely, yeah. So I am actually happy to announce that in the three years that I've been here, this is the probably lowest number. Not that the number's any good, but it is the lowest number of openings that we've had since I've been here. So it is kind of some good news. Again, we still have a lot of work to do, but just wanted to share that. So total with the job openings, we have a total of 128 throughout the district. Of those, nineteen and a half of them are our teachers. If you break it down, ten at the elementary level, five at the middle school level, and then four and a half at the high school level. For school psychologists, we're still looking for roughly five of them. Speech-language pathologists, we're short two. Pairs is our biggest need. I did report last that we were at 66, so we are down to 63. So we did make a little headway there, but nothing to be super proud about. Food service, we're at 18 openings. Plan ops, total of 14 openings, and that's including 10 crossing guards. Administrative openings, we have five. We still have the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, Director of Communications, which we're gonna, a little bit later, kind of see if we can take a different direction with that. The Civil Rights Coordinator, the District Accountant, and we're still looking for that AP at Amherst Street. And then we do have one secretary opening, which is actually in the non-affiliated, and it's for the ELL Student Services position. I believe they just did interviews last week, so fingers crossed we get good news this week.
That sounds great, thank you. Any questions on that? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions. Are the speech-language pathologists on the teacher's contract?
They are part of the teacher's contract, yeah.
Is there any way to consider taking speech-language and school psychologists out of that contract and making their own? Just because these are people who have advanced degrees and who can make, I mean, literally double to start in the private market. So I don't know how we can be competitive.
No.
Yeah, so we'd have to, we'd have to work with the teachers' union to work on getting them out if that were the case. For them to start their own, they would need to do that on their own. They would have to come forward and say, hey, I would like to start a union. But in order to get them out and into the non-affiliated, we would have to work with the union side by side on that.
Okay. Is that something that we think is an insurmountable or unrealistic or even unhelpful goal?
I think there's a couple of different approaches. One will be going into contract negotiations, if that's something that we want to be discussing with NTU. And then to Mr. Bowes's point on, again, working, if there is a desire to separate, you know, it would be, is there enough speech and language people to form their own union or do they want to be a non-affiliate? I think there's a, you know, first step is really as we enter contract negotiations.
Right, I mean, obviously, everyone knows my position is that we need to pay the teachers more as well. Like, I don't want to make it sound like we don't need to pay teachers more, because I think we do. Having said that, I just know that as long as I've been on the board, which is seven years now, we have always had to contract out speech-language pathologists, and we've always had to contract out school psychologists. Like, I've never seen us be even close to fully staffed on that. So, and I know we're spending significant money on contractors for both of these, because these aren't positions that we can just not have. So my follow-up, my other question, is about the teacher openings. How many classes are we not offering because we don't have teachers? And do we have any school, any long-term subs filling in, hopefully to like eventually get hired or something else?
Yeah, so we do have a couple of long-term subs that we're filling in now. We actually have a couple of long-term sub openings as well for teachers going out on various reasons. But right now, one of the bigger concerns would be, I would say, grade four at Fairgrounds Elementary School, that we're really looking for a grade four teacher. We do, they are filling in right now with what they have, but we are still looking for that grade four teacher position. There are a couple of teacher of the deaf positions that are open that are other, our second concern is really getting those filled as well to help out with that. That should also help out with our speech-language pathologist positions as well. And then the rest are really special ed or the big openings there.
So what happens if we don't have, for example, teachers for our deaf and hard-of-hearing kids? Like, are we, are we running into some legal problems with meeting IEPs? Also with the special ed teachers?
Not yet. We've been pretty creative. Mr. Alexander's here. If we, you know, have any questions on some of the creative solutions that he's been doing, even to the point of, you know, do we have to, I was gonna show some of my age and say we have to Skype people, and I don't know the last time, like, the word Skype. But, but we are looking at whether virtual teachers, but that's a hard to fill area. And Mr. Alexander has been very creative in making sure that we are compliant. He's also been in contact with many of the districts who are sending students over so that they're fully aware of our staffing concerns. And then the other question about middle school and high school. At the middle school, we're down a couple of U.A. teachers, and so we're being creative with their schedules so that we can fill, have students have the opportunity to make sure they're taking a French or a language class. But it is mostly special educators, one grade four teacher at the elementary, and the high school has been pretty much covered.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving on with tonight's agenda. We have four new job descriptions that are being introduced tonight. And the first one is for Central Registration Project Manager. Dr. Andre, would you like to speak to that or with Mr. Bowes?
Yeah, I can speak to it. So this position, one of the findings that came out of the Department of Justice is data quality. And so through the research and feedback from the DOJ, as we, we noticed in looking at our registration forms, and it's just some of our data wasn't clean, you know. And part of it, and more importantly, where we're looking at a central registration, currently, our families may have to, if you're new to the district, enroll in, it's school-based. So if you have three kids at three different ages, you might have to go to an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. That's burdensome on families, especially if you have transportation, language. And so what we're looking for is actually to open up a central registration area. It's one-stop shopping, where families can come into one place, register their children for the schools, provide, and then we could provide them the supports, whether it's ELL support, special education supports, the right paperwork, and then we could look at data control. So we are looking for someone to come in and help us project manage, like, look at locations, keep us on schedule, help us with some research. There's a couple districts that we already visited with the appropriate staffing, with the resources that are gonna be needed. So we need somebody to do some research on this. We are looking at a temporary position to, again, keep us on track. We have already looked at Broad Street North. And then working with Mr. Smith, we, we may have a viable solution. I think that may come up of possibly utilizing one of the trailers that's now at Main D of Birch Hill and bringing that over to Central Office and opening up a new wing there. So we're exploring different options. This person will help us with that research and costing it out. And that's this position. So we want to be transparent that we are looking for someone to help us with our project management.
Any questions?
How long do you anticipate the job to be? So it's a part-time, I'm guessing like 20, 25 hours a week? For how many months?
Yeah, we're looking at 10 to 15 hours per week, quite honestly. And then it depends on what our solution is. Some of it's gonna be the, just to research on what's the adequate staffing. Once we identify the staffing, and then if it gets into the logistics, it might go over to Mr. Smith at that point on if it's construction or budget, that aspect. So we're probably thinking, when we first came up with this, we were hoping to be done by February in the, in the research. So it shouldn't, shouldn't be that long.
I just, I want to know where the funding for this is coming from. We're just at the first month of the new school year, and we did work hard on the budget last winter, spring. And now, I know there are a few requests tonight for new positions. And then there's also an MOU we're gonna be looking at at our full meeting later on to help compensate some people who are doing more than their share of work because of openings. So I'm concerned about where the funding is coming.
Yeah, so this position is actually one of the unfilled positions to date. So then we haven't paid somebody in that position since it was, it's been vacated. So we would use some of those savings to actually pay for this position.
So it's not a new position, then we just haven't filled it before?
No, so I'll give you an example. So we have a vacant ELL secretary position that hasn't been filled since July 1st. So we have that money, that we have, that's savings. So we would reallocate that money to pay for this part-time position. So once we hire somebody, then that position will be filled. This will be a new position, but it would expire within six months.
So the funding's already?
The funding's, yeah, we've identified a funding source.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just real quick. So this would be like an independent contractor that would come in and just do this?
Correct, yeah.
So, any other questions? No. So this is not a new position, but you do need us to create a motion to?
Yeah, we would like it to be approved. So again, in full transparency, the work that's getting done, it's a temporary. It's almost bringing in a different contract with a different agency. But we wanted a motion, and again, that full transparency.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion?
All right, I move to approve the Central Registration Project Manager job description.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next, next we're looking at an ELL screening specialist. Who would like to speak to that one?
So the ELL screening specialist, one of the requirements that the DOJ kind of brought upon us with the ELL is we have to go ahead and re-screen all of the ELL candidates or students just to make sure what, to kind of see what services they need and what other aspects that they either still fall under ELL or they don't. So in order to do that with all of the students in our district, since we're one of the biggest districts in the state of New Hampshire, that we're gonna bring in this part-time position, it's kind of really as an as-needed basis. It'll probably be utilized more in the beginning of the year, and as we get through all the students, it'll be as new students are added. So it's kind of treated similar to like our interpreters. If we don't need them that week, they're not gonna work that week. So that's kind of how this position we see working. And it's really to bring them in to help screen those candidates just because we have a sheer, the sheer amount of them.
Any questions? Ms. Raymond?
Who's doing this now? Is it the Assistant Director of ELL or?
I believe it's the Assistant Director and the ELL Coordinator.
Okay. And is it too mu, like, is there too many students for the existing people to do it? I guess the question is, if this is gonna be something like as-needed, almost like a contractor, that's a per diem thing, is that necessary? And do you anticipate finding someone who just wants like a couple hours here or there?
Yeah, so I think there's a lot with the DOJ of just catching up on a lot of the work and then people who are newly registered. This will be in conjunction with the project manager of like what would the, the full staffing at Central Registration look like? Do we need somebody who's gonna be a screener, who's gonna be positioned in there, you know, 40 hours a week, as well as like a homeschool liaison, so with that staffing? So this may grow as we look at what our central registration needs are. But right now, it's too piecemeal, and there's a lot of work going on. So we need the temporary support.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Lampier?
All right, I know I'm not on the committee. I wasn't sure if I could ask a question, but the funding for this, will it come from another unfilled, unfilled position?
Yeah, so Director Chopra has worked with Mr. Gray on identifying a funding source, which is already currently in the operating budget and from one of the unfilled positions.
Do you know which one it is?
I can get the specifics for you.
Okay, thanks.
I have a follow-up. What happens when we fill that position? Like, for example, it sounds like we're going to get an ELL secretary. The other ones are a little bit more on the road.
Yeah, I mean, just those positions in the budget are prorated. And so we're, when we build a budget, it's from July through June. And now we're in September, almost October. So those three months of salaries are still in the budget line that we could reallocate.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Ms. Raymond?
No, I'll make the motion if you want.
Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the ELL screening specialist job description.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next we're looking at a job, a job description for Human Resource Generalist.
Yes, so this position, as everybody probably knows, Dot Levek, she's decided to move on from the Nashville School District officially. Her last day is gonna be this Thursday. So what we're really looking for, since we were kind of looking for more help anyways, we were really looking to turn that part-time position into a full-time position. Dot pretty much did very close to full-time hours anyways, taking some weeks off to kind of help her hours with retirement. So it's not really much of a change there. The real change that I wanted to add was it's a generalist position, so it can really do all aspects and facets of HR as opposed to specializing in just retirement or leaves. We really need somebody to kind of have their hands in everything over there as we're kind of, you know, trying to backfill and get caught up from even this past summer. So that's where this position comes from.
She's been with us a long time.
Yeah, she has. I think she officially resigned and, or retired in 2009, so. She's gonna be a big hole to fill.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Any questions?
That feels true. Do you intend to have any overlap with Dot and whoever takes over so that she can get them up to speed on how she's been doing retirements for the past, you know, 30 or 40 years?
So we're actually doing that now, and we have been for the last three weeks with Doty to try to fill in the hole that we're gonna have. So we've been working with our team right now to kind of fill in until we get this replacement.
Okay. It's, I mean, good, I'm, I'm happy for her, but it's just sad when we lose such extensive institutional knowledge.
And again, just in support of this position, just for some data, since August 1st, HR has processed nearly 250 new employees to the district. So it's about an hour per employee in three hours for like orientation. So it's a lot of work, and I think this is a position that's truly needed.
Questions? I'm just wondering, so Ms. Levek is part-time currently, and so this is full-time, full-year. So where will the additional funding come from for this position?
That'll come from our budget. So it'll come from our HR budget that we have.
So we, it's actually already in this year's budget?
It is, yeah.
All right, that's great, thank you. Any other questions? No? Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the Human Resources Generalist job description.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Finally, we have a, a job description for a Webmaster Social Media Coordinator. We thought we had someone, but I guess that didn't work out. So is this description different than what we had a few months ago when we thought we had hired someone?
It is. So this is a little more specific to a person who would directly oversee the web, in our webpage, and also more transparent and focused on really using our social media branding. The difference is, I think I've told several of you from a director, is we're looking for, to recruit someone who's much more hands-on. You know, a lot of the feedback that we got from the director interviews was that my team is going to do some things. I'm gonna oversee, I'm gonna help process. We need somebody to come in who's gonna be a chief storyteller, working on our social media content. And the other big lift, quite honestly, is around our Webmaster. It's, we have 19 different schools, 20 different sites, not even the back pages. We are going through an RFP right now on updating our website just to make it ADA compliant. So there's a lot of work that needs to get done. So we want it to be much more specific on what we want this person to handle and not be a generalist saying, he has a good theory of action, I can tell you policies. We need somebody to really get into executing at the, at the webpage level and the social media and telling our story.
Question? Ms. Raymond?
So the, the HR, I'm sorry, the Communication Director job has changed quite a bit over the last 20 years. And there was a time when it was also part of like telling our story was issuing press releases, coordinating with WMUR when we had a, you know, a local newspaper. Do you see this person also doing that? I'm just, I'm looking at the, it almost looks like two hats. Like, there's an IT hat, and then I'm worried about us losing the PR hat.
Yeah, and that's why I see the social media really driving that aspect and work. I mean, news agencies and that communication aspect of it. So I'd see that, that being the same without saying, you're just doing press releases. I think press releases is part of that branding and social media. So I see it in conjunction.
Do you anticipate this job, this, this person also doing some of the communication from the board? So for example, as we are moving into talking about elementary redistricting, would the responsibility for communicating that to the public fall under this role?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
So would this person need to be like a storyteller but also like a face of the administration? Would they be someone who would talk to the press if there's, you know, something going on?
It depends, quite honestly, on people's comfort level, the seriousness of the nature, like, of the situation. So, you know, the last person that we brought in was very comfortable in front of the camera, and I think could be that storyteller. But I, I don't think that would make or break the candidate. Again, it depends on what the situation is going to be. But, you know, if there's a serious situation at one of the high schools, I'm gonna be the face in that situation. But if it's like, hey, I'm gonna interview students, I'm gonna do reels or like something fun and exciting, and they're comfortable, they can be in that nature. Same thing was, when a former director was here, she wasn't the face of the district. It was, you know, she would help with some speech writing and that aspect of it. But we've, we felt I would be the face.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Oh, I just triggered another thought. So one of the things that we have been kind of tossing around in policy is having a little bit more consistency on social media throughout the district. Like, for example, North has an employee of the building who runs the North Facebook group for parents. And it's mostly like a, it's like a bulletin board where she gives people information that they need to know about SATs and college days and, you know, upcoming sporting events. But other schools are using PTO members. Are you anticipating a more consistent policy under this person?
Correct, yes.
Yep.
I like that plan.
And this person would help train everybody on the policies and procedures so that the information's accurate, clear, concise, and we're kind of, like you mentioned, doing it uniformly throughout the district.
So is the salary range for this the same as it was earlier this year when we posted the position? That's just been changed a little, or?
There's a salary range, but, you know, it might not be at the director level.
It's non-affiliated?
This would not be affiliate, yeah.
So the NASIS contract or the, no, the non-affiliated handbook? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the HR Generalist job description.
Second.
All in favor?
No, Webmaster. I'm sorry, what did I say? You said HR Generalist.
Oh, we're on the same.
It's because I had.
Does that mean we get another one?
Sure. No, sorry, I hadn't written it down, that's why. I move that we approve the Webmaster and Social Media Coordinator job description.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next we're moving on to the personnel recommendations for tonight. We've all had a chance to look at those. And did you want to comment on any of it, Mr. Bowes? It looks like you have been very busy over there.
A lot of these are actually, some of them are from the summer as well. We just had that last meeting that was canceled, so we just wanted to throw, get all these people through on the board.
Okay. Any questions on that?
No, Mr. Bowes answered my question, because I noticed that a lot of these dates had passed.
Okay, then I'll be looking for a motion for the personnel recommendations.
I move that we approve the Personnel Recommendation dated today, September 30, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have one administrative recommendation, which I'm going to, sorry. Share.
Wait, where'd it go?
Oh, it should be right there.
Yay.
Yes. We have a recommendation, oh, sorry. We have a recommendation to elect Lennox Bannon to the Position of Elementary Special Education Coordinator effective October 14, 2024, at an annual salary of $84,456. Thank you. And he's here tonight with Mr. Alexander. And would you like to say a few words with Mr. Alexander, and then we can hear from our candidate?
Sure, first I picked the wrong seat, so. But yeah, we're happy to bring Lennox forward as a replacement for Ms. Cook, who's moved on to Birch Hill as Assistant Principal. As you say, you can never replace someone, but we have another very qualified candidate, and the committee was very pleased with Lennox to bring Lennox forward to the board tonight. And I will turn it over to Lennox to talk about themselves, and you folks ask questions.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
What can you tell us about yourself?
So I've been in the field of special education education since 2006. I graduated from Keene State back in 2005 with an undergrad in physical education. And at that time, it was hard to find a PE job. And I started working in a residential setting for kids with pretty significant challenging behaviors. I worked there for about seven years. And then I moved down to North Carolina, Durham, North Carolina. And I worked in the public school system down there as a self-contained special education teacher and then a behavior specialist for the district down there. And then I worked in a clinical setting down there as a behavior analyst. I have a, I should have prefaced this. I have a master's in special education as well. And then I have a board-certified behavior analyst as well. I worked at BCBA in a clinical setting, had a child, and we decided we wanted to move back up to New Hampshire and raise our children up here. And we've been living up here since 2019, right before COVID. And I've worked in the clinical setting. I worked in the public school setting for three years prior, most recently. And yeah, I've, I've grown as a, you know, special education teacher and then leader in the, throughout the years. Lots of experience, you know, working with significant challenging behaviors as well as mentoring teachers, providing, you know, strategies and techniques. And that's really what I want to bring to this position, is really mentoring those teachers, improving school morale in special education. We know that, you know, turnover is high. You know, I wrote down, we have, you know, 63 para openings. And yeah, one experience that I had down in North Carolina is it's very different. One, uh, experience that I had down in North Carolina is it's very different down there. There's less one to ones, uh, paras down there. So I was able to experience that as well. And I've mentioned that in the interview with Dan, um, you know, working as a special education teacher down there with eight to 10 kids in a self-contained with only two paras is very different than, you know, working with one to ones up here. So it was really great to see that.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Raymond?
Of course I have questions. So, um, Ms. Lampier and I, last week, um, went to a presentation of, um, The Kids We Lose with, uh, Dr. Ross Green, um, and the Office of the Child Advocate. In the presentation was, it was a film and then a, a panel all about restraint and seclusion and kind of the experiences of kids, um, up and down, mostly the eastern seacoast. And so a, as we were watching this, I, I was very affected, um, by what I was seeing and, and very impacted by what Dr. Green had to say about, um, not just de-escalation, but trying to get to the root of the behavioral issues because of, you know, frustration and developmental issues before it gets to that point. So my question is, is what is your experience with not just CPI and de-escalation, but helping with, um, learning when kids are heading in that direction of becoming dysregulated and kind of, um, moving the needle so that we don't need to use restraint and seclusion as much? It's kind of a loaded question. Surprise. Welcome.
Thank you. So, um, you know, you brought up CPI and I, um, I've had the, I shouldn't say pleasure, but I, I've been trained to be a trainer, um, in, uh, MANT was my first, um, experience with restraint. Then I became a CPI trainer down in North Carolina and I currently am. I also have done, um, as a safety care trainer. In my training experience as a trainer, my, you know, my big, um, comment to, to staff that I'm training is immediate danger, you know, is when hands on. And I would take the, the binder that I was teaching from and I'd show them the, this thick binder right here, this part is all about de-escalation, right? And all those preventative strategies and this little bitty piece of that binder is that physical intervention. I'm very, very hands off myself. As a behavior analyst, I've really, um, acquired a lot of preventative strategies and how to, to work with kids. I, I have a tattoo on my arm that states, "Understanding, patience, courage and trust." And those are the four words that I, you know, keep in my mind when working with these kids, have that mutual understanding with them and that mutual trust, really build that rapport with them. And really keep in mind those setting events that are happening in the child's life, right? Are they hungry? Did they not have breakfast? How did they sleep that night? Are they coming down with a cold? Are there family dynamics happening in the house? Keeping all of those factors in mind, you know, when children, um, might be engaging in some sort of behavior or even before that, right? Keeping those things in mind, um, analyzing how they're coming into school, how they're coming into that classroom. Do they have their basic needs met, you know?
Ms. Raymond, I just want to point out too, that, um, I think I mentioned before, we work with, um, Ross Green through our Crotch Mountain Foundation grant. And we had the pleasure of Ross presenting, Dr. Green presenting to our staff as well as some others. We opened it up around, um, South Central, New Hampshire, um, in June. So we anticipate having him back virtually again at some point this year as well. So I'm glad to hear that you had the chance to see him as well.
It was really moving. I appreciate your, your, um, answer, Mr. Banning. I think that this is something that, uh, we, Ms. Lampier and I and Mr. Johnson and Ms. Daniel Williams have talked about, um, and Ms. Darling at the Policy Committee. And we're really excited to see some of, um, the new, um, paperwork. I don't know what the forms, you know what I mean? Being put into play and really getting parents more involved. But we're also excited to see, um, our district recognize when staff is doing a really good job, um, meeting the needs of our kids and also learning from that so that we can continue to improve. So, so welcome. I'm excited.
And that certainly is one of the things the committee really liked about London's background is the diversity and being able to deal with challenging behaviors as we've seen that within our district and the programs that we offer. So we're really excited about that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yep. So, um, looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that we elect Lennox Bannon to the position of elementary special education coordinator, effective, uh, October 14th, 2024, at a salary of $84,456.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Welcome. Congratulations.
Just a small update, it's going to be October 15th. The 14th is a holiday.
Oh, right. You can take, you can take that day off.
Well, thanks. All right, so October 15th.
October 15th.
Friendly, friendly amendment. So we should make sure we say that tonight at the?
Oh, wait, yeah, and when I look at this, I'll, I'll make a note to myself, October 15th. Okay. Okay, um, if there is no other business, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the committee meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 6:14.